We're reconvening the workshop today, May 15th, 2018, of the Sarasota County School Board. We have two items left to discuss. The first one is Policy 2.51 of our policies that we are reviewing, and we have with us our attorney, Mr. Art Hardy. Mr. Hardy?
Thank you. At the policy review that was conducted, I guess, earlier this month, we got to this policy 2.51, and there was discussion by the board about perhaps expanding this policy to include some other groups. As you'll recall, the first portion of the policy basically prohibits various kinds of political activity on school grounds, and then Roman numeral eight provides the exceptions to that policy. Based on the conversation from the last workshop, we have added, for discussion purposes, two new additions to the exclusions from the policy, and that's F and G. F just has to do with student clubs. There was, I don't think they have ever actually been excluded, but that was just explicitly saying so. And then G is taken, in concept at least, not verbatim, but pretty close, from a similar policy in Seminole County that seemed to apply to the situation that was discussed at the last board meeting with the Northport group and their candidate forum or their public forum that they do in July.
It really wasn't, it's really not a candidate forum. It's more like a...
I would say event.
An event. It's really not a candidate event. Like I said, they'll have the chamber there. They'll have, they have a variety of people having booths, and one of the people that had booths was the different political parties, but it was, it really wasn't a political forum. It was more like a community event.
Celebration of the community.
Yeah, it was a community event, and part of the community was the political, there was no body giving speeches. There was no exchange of political ideas. You happened to, sorry?
It was.
Oh, whenever I've gone, I'm sorry, but...
When I've gone, we exchanged political information. We talked to each other about...
Well, yeah, no booths, and the booths, but they didn't, there was no, like...
Walked around. Some people did not have a table, so they walked around.
I would say, but what he's saying is the term "political forums" is, I think, not what we're looking for. I think if we used the term "event," that it would cover forum or the event that we're talking about down in Northport. So it'd be...
That's better than forum.
Events conducted outside of a school, outside of school hours in which the general public is invited to meet and hear all candidates in a particular race, or to meet, I don't know what and...
The and, the and.
To meet representatives of both sides of an issue appearing on the ballot under the following conditions: The event shall be sponsored by an organization having a use agreement with the school. All announced candidates for specific office or representatives for against each issue shall be given an invitation. Candidate, you know, I think this gets to be a little bit more than what we really need. I don't know.
This seems more like Tiger Bay. What we were talking about was like a business expo.
Well, that's...
See, the difference, you understand the difference?
I do understand the difference. I didn't know how broad you wanted to be. We certainly can talk about, I mean, a business expo in and of itself wouldn't be prohibited under this policy.
But they're saying a business expo that the Democratic Party was one of the, was one of the attendees. That's the issue. And they were being told, no, no political booths can be at this business expo that have, you know, a Shutter's guy and a guy who's selling windows, and then right next door had a...
I guess a question is, because I think what this policy is really trying to reinforce is that if one is invited, all are invited.
I agree, I agree.
So regardless of whether it's a forum or a community event at which one is invited, do you want to make sure in the policy that all are invited? And that makes it a little harder.
But I don't want us to have Tiger Bay at a school property, but I don't have a problem with the chamber having a business expo on school property that one of the booths was the party. I don't know how the other board members feel, but I make a distinction between Tiger Bay and a business expo.
So how do you distinguish between the two? The primary function is not political, but political is permitted. So if it's a business expo, we don't prohibit, but it can't be the primary purpose. So, I mean, Tiger Bay convenes with the primary purpose of having a discussion with the candidates, a candidate forum. The event in Northport, the primary purpose, I don't believe, is to distribute political, but if it's a peripheral or secondary, if political candidates would to come, but I don't know how you commit that to language.
It's relay for life.
Right?
That's what the event is.
With political flyers.
All the political candidates are there.
Right.
But do you want to, how much proactive, how proactively do you want to require an organization like that to make sure all candidates or all viewpoints are invited? If it's a political forum, that, you know, if it's Tiger Bay or the League of Women Voters or, you know, an organization like that, it's pretty easy to say, you can only do this if everybody's invited. If it's the chamber, it just makes it a little harder, because that isn't their primary focus.
And they might say, we didn't invite anybody.
They just showed up.
They, they signed up. I mean, so if you call one, you have to call all, but if someone calls and says, can I get a table, will you allow it?
I don't think this is put on by the chamber.
It doesn't go on by the chamber.
I, I, I...
American Kansas Society.
I don't know that we have to be so prescriptive to it. I mean, if they rent the, the space...
You've got to be really careful, because then anybody can rent the space at any school.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, then you could have candidates renting space for a campaign rally. I mean, you could have that. I just don't know that that's what the board necessarily...
Well, I, I think maybe we might want to add that the campaign contributions are still prohibited. I mean, that's...
You know, it depends how, how broad you want. I mean, there are plenty of places in the community for candidates to have rallies. I don't know that they need to have the schools to do that, but that's your, that's your call.
I think the way it's written is pretty good. I mean, it could say forum or...
I would say event, and then number six, it says "in any what." You need to change that to "any way."
Any way, yeah.
But I would think if we just changed the forum to event and, and let it go, and then take out the and, that doesn't make sense.
Are we going to approve this today?
No.
No.
Okay.
We're not going to read it.
No, we're just, we're just going for...
No, this was, we got through about half of Chapter Two last time, and this was one that there was further discussion, obviously, about. So we're just taking this one a little out of order, but it's just going to be part of the whole Chapter Two, which will come back to finish off later this summer sometime.
I have some comments about, on the front page. Political posters shall not be displayed in schools or on school property.
What are you saying?
Or on school property.
So you're saying...
Add the phrase "or on school property."
Right.
And that would be helpful. Our custodians collect a number of political signs that make their way onto our campus, particularly the points of entry for parents for drop-off, pickup, or the intersection of Beneva and Proctor.
Okay.
Then we go to four. Students shall not be required. I think that should be allowed, to distribute campaign literature on school property. It should be though.
Well, but we don't want to require them to do it anywhere. I mean, that's not part of, I don't know that anybody would do that, but...
That is done. If you hire students.
Right, but that's not a school requirement. I mean, that's a private...
Your U.S. history teacher can't require you to go on campus on behalf of a candidate.
That's not clear.
I'm just curious. Why would you hire a student to distribute campaign flyers to a bunch of people who cannot vote?
This says nothing about a school campus. This says you can't require students to distribute campaign literature. You're looking for a kid on a bike to go hang things on your mailbox flag. You can hire him as a transaction, but leave the schools out of it. I don't want you working through the schools in any way.
You've got to go door to door, Eric.
Well, what's, they can do that.
As long as it's not part of school.
Right.
Sure.
But it can't be a class project.
Right.
Okay.
So do we, so is there anything we want to change about four? Or are we happy with it as it is?
Shouldn't be required. Okay, it's a different connotation. I'm fine with that. So wait a minute, I have five. I have... The police shall refrain from participation in partisan politics on school property during the school's hours are in session. What happens after the school, after school, with after-school activities?
Well, I don't think we're directing the employees after their duty day is over, but the remaining...
They're going home.
The remaining part of the policy remains, and that is that, you know, you're not distributing literature. You're not putting up political posters.
I...
It says during the hours school is in session, or after school. Why is it only...
So if they're, if it's after-school hours and they want to talk to a friend, they can talk to a friend, and, I mean, a friend or another teacher, as long as it's not during school hours.
Five, employees shall refrain from participating in partisan politics on school property. Just leave it.
Is there a problem that we're trying to solve here?
That's better.
I didn't think we had a problem.
Well, you had to issue a waiver to allow the event in Northport. That's the event we're trying to...
Yeah, but we're talking about other things.
Right, I mean, the, the initial proposal that we brought had...
I understand, I was there. I was just trying to understand if there were other, because we're talking about other things. I was just curious, is there a problem?
That I know of.
Okay. That's what I was trying to understand.
That's all I had.
All right.
I mean, like partisan politics while school is in session. I mean, what if you've got a bumper sticker on your car? I mean...
That's allowed. Anything on your car is allowed. You're not...
Nonpartisan politics, as long as it's school, that's okay.
No.
It says partisan, I'm just...
Only if I ride in your car, Shirley, that I get in trouble about your bumper stickers.
No, you're allowed. I checked this out legally a long time ago. You're allowed.
Well, eight D specifically exempts bumper stickers, basically, or...
Unless, unless Shirley requires me to ride in her car, then...
If I run over you with my car.
Well, then that's okay.
All right, so I will make the changes that were discussed in G, changing forum to event and fixing the typos, and we will bring it back to you further, with further revisions, when we come back to do the remainder of Chapter Two, which will be not in June.
And...
It'll be, I guess, July or August.
The next item on our agenda is the operations, and with that in mind, I would like to back up a little bit to Chapter 2.50.
This is not, this is not a policy.
It's not on there. This is not about politics.
This is a procedure.
And it goes back to Policy 2.50.
Yes, it's, hi.
And, and I'm not saying that we change it. I'm saying that we look at Point 2.50, and we might need to bring 2.50 back.
I've got it.
And, and I'll tell you, it says, "Each member of the board is encouraged to participate in the activities and programs conducted by state, regional, and national associations of the school board. The superintendent shall include an amount in each proposed annual budget to cover expenses to support the participation of individual school board members in activities and programs conducted by the state and other organizations." So to me, this means that when you get down to procedures, this is a separate one, and if what we need to do is to make it more clear, maybe we ought to spell out those state and national school boards associations that we're looking for.
This is the policy. These are the procedures, which we don't have as policy.
But somebody is trying to take what is policy and stick it into the procedures by saying that it's, it's not something that, that we're supposed to do, that it's all individual members. And I, and this says here that we're supposed to, this superintendent is supposed to give us the line item to, to cover those costs. That's where I'm at. And then, and then they're trying to say, no, that's not the way it should be, and I, yes, it is the way it should be.
Yes, it is.
There's a separate line item for this, and this is where it comes from. And, you know, maybe we need to clarify that for someone who has confusion with it.
Well, the, the first thing on this procedure page states that the operating procedures the school board has described below shall be adopted by a formal vote of the board. It doesn't have to be a formal vote of the board if it is a procedure that we're working with. This is not a policy. This is a procedure, correct?
Clearly, yes.
So we should have take out, shall be...
Shall we take that out?
...by a formal vote of the board. And then we take out the next line.
Well, but I would ask, how do you reach consensus on the procedure absent a vote? You all have to agree amongst yourselves?
We should be able to.
Well, I, I think we can do that, but we've been, we've been talking about this since January, and because of, you know, Bridgette not being here, or we have postponed it, you know, it's kind of like today is the day, and, and I think we're not, we don't have to vote on it till she comes back, but I think we can make some changes to that. And I don't think we need a formal adopted vote of the board for a procedure. And I think that this, 2.50 does say what we need it to say.
Well, I mean, typically, policies are what the board votes on, and procedures are put in place by the superintendent. I...
Not, not in this case.
But in this case, and I don't have it in front of me, I haven't been part of these conversations, but you are in effect imposing your own procedures on yourself.
That's correct.
And so the typical rule that the superintendent does procedures doesn't really apply here. So I would think the board would need to approve its, its own procedures, and I would agree with what the superintendent said. I'm not sure how you do that absent a vote on it. I mean, normally, you don't vote on procedures, because they're not the school board's procedures, but in this case, it really is a school board procedure.
Well, just something that we loosely operated under, and we had some things written out for when people, you know, new people came on the board, but it wasn't like, it was just a informational kind of thing. But I was looking through this, and there were a couple of things. For example, membership on committees. Eric, do you serve on the Fair Board? Is that part of this group's Fair Board?
We don't have a designate of the Fair Board.
They have a designate, but, but we're not required to have a designate. We could not have a designate. Does Frank Kovak...
Frank Kovak, in the Fairs by law, which has no binding on the school board...
Right.
They have, they have a place for a school board member and a county commission member. Frank Kovak had it, and then they asked me to take Frank Kovak's, but we are under no obligation to...
But we didn't really get involved in that.
Right. We are under no obligation to do what the Fair, Fair Board can't impose their will upon us. I could choose not to go, and they could, they have no recourse against me.
But they got to pick the board member to sit on their board. We didn't have a vote that said Eric will be our designate of the Fair Board. They just have in their bylaws, we'd like a school board member, and they extended to you an invitation.
Someone picked me? Wow. I'm shocked by that.
Well, yeah, well, what if somebody else picked me? Pick me, pick me, pick me. At any rate, I just was curious about that, because I knew that you were on the Fair Board, and I didn't know, I didn't remember us making that determination, and Frank left.
There may be others, but the one thing I can think of where you are required to have somebody is to the Value Adjustment Board.
Yes.
We're trying out.
And you're on that now.
And that's voted on annually.
If you want me not to be on the Fair Board.
No, I'm fine with all. Board, I just don't remember us discussing it when we did have a list of different committees or different...
And I can promise you, I will not be submitting an expense report for the Fair Board.
Well, I'm, I'm glad of...
Or any other thing.
Or anything else. Then we get districts...
Are you on, just wait a minute. Are you on the school board membership on committees?
Yeah, I was looking under...
Can we not jump around? Can we see if anybody else has comments on that?
Sir, layless, look on the back on the first page. Does anybody have any other comments on the first page? The one thing that I wanted to discuss in this was that caution about answering emails individually. If you're the board chair and it's addressed to the board, who answers the email?
The board chair.
The board chair.
If I get an email that's addressed to Shirley Brown, I answer it.
And I, I understand where you're coming from, but then what happens is, a couple days later, an email comes back and says, I only received a response from Jane and Shirley, and they're the only ones who cared about my issue.
Or the board chair doesn't necessarily, I mean, if it's an issue that we have coming up or whatever, I mean, my, my good government training I had says, if you get an email addressed to you, you answer it. And I, I intend to answer emails that are sent to me.
I know. I heard you loud and clear.
Jane, you are 100% correct, but then when people send those emails back...
Well, it's confusing, and sometimes it could be a liability issue if we answer something incorrectly, but I always advocate for the board chair answering. If it's something that I know just came to me, then obviously I'd answer it. But there is a, a big concern that I have sometimes in the amount of things going back and forth with the community, and I just hope we don't get...
But you are 100% correct, except the optics of it. And we are all politically elected people, and we get these emails that said, only Jane cared about what I had to say.
Yeah, I know.
I got them. I mean, I got the same thing.
And you're 100% right, Jane, but we're still elected officials and got to deal with that reality.
Most of the time, when I answer them, I answer them and thank them for their email, and then forward it on to staff.
Yeah, that's what I do, too.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing, and...
Yeah.
But mine always has my own name on it.
Yeah, mine too.
Doesn't say the board.
But if you get into answering in lieu of it being answered by the chair, perhaps, Shirley, it would be a good idea if you just let Kathy know, or somebody know that you have made an elaborate answer. I mean, I, or, or whatever.
Well, sometimes I do, if, if it has, I do try to let the superintendent know or somebody know. When I, that, I try to do that, but, and sometimes even when I refer it to someone that I know might have, you know, that I don't have oversight over that person, I will sometimes CC the superintendent on it, so that...
Good.
I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be directing people to do things, you know, out of bounds.
Which also gives me the opportunity to double back and go, wait a minute, you shared a piece of information. But typically, I don't share it with the respondent. I just share it with you and say, in your response, you said X, and that's not exactly perfect. Y is a better reason. And then I see where you go back and correct it, but I'd rather you correct it than me to correct a board member.
I copy you.
I think most of you.
Not all the time, but...
What I do is I do the same thing as Shirley. I put Shirley Brown's name at the bottom of my emails.
I mean, but, but I know I get emails that are sent directly to me on, on issues that they know I'm following.
Down a charter school and stuff. I mean, I'm not going to forward them off to Todd. I mean...
And...
But I'm saying only if you give a rather elaborate answer, somebody needs to know. You know, if Bridgette was going to answer something as well, I mean, I think there's some issues sometimes that we might get.
Well, and perhaps when the chair answers an email for the board, how do we know when they answer them or when they don't? So I would think perhaps in a situation like that, whoever is the chair answers as the chair for the board and CCs the rest of the board members.
Is that okay?
I mean, if they're going to be answering for the board, I want to know what they answered for the board.
Yes.
A board member can copy other board members on a response, but then the other board members cannot go back and then be engaged in any back and forth about it.
Okay.
It also depends on the circumstance. So if someone sends me an email, why is the district doing this about doing enrollment? It's really, that's something you should forward to staff. But if someone says, I think you should vote against a charter school, well, that's something within the purview of the school. Yeah, that's a vote that's going to be done by, as a board member versus something that's a decision by the, by the staff. So that's the kind of decision, that's the kind of how I look at it.
They wouldn't get an answer from me.
Huh?
I wouldn't answer that one.
Well, you're free to do whatever you want to do.
No, because you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to say how you're going to vote.
Well, sometimes I do, so.
Is that correct, Art?
I think a board member can state his or her position if they, if you want to. What I, what I would suggest is if it's on a policy matter, then you're free to, to state your position. If it's something that's coming before you in your quasi-judicial role, then you need to wait and not prejudge a situation like a termination or an expulsion or anything else that comes before you in a quasi-judicial matter. That has to be ruled on by the board on the basis of the evidence and the record. So in that case, you should wait until you have had the opportunity to review all of that, discuss it at the board table, and then vote. So I would not want you to... that's up to you if you want to respond to that or not.
I take the stand that I've been taking for 20 years. Excuse me.
There's, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that.
To not.
There's nothing wrong with that stand.
Because I could come to the board meeting, and I could hear something.
Could change your mind.
Change my mind.
Sure.
And therefore, I've already told the community that I'm going to vote one way, but when I get to the board table, I hear something that makes me say, no, I'll vote another way. So I'm not going to say.
And that's.
That's within your power.
Perfectly fine.
You can do that.
And for the reasons you said, maybe a good practice.
School board membership on committees, we just started to discuss that. When we talk about committee membership, are we talking about the, the board chair and the vice chair, or are we talking about all of the committees that we belong to?
All of the committees, I think.
But, but we only belong to one committee, the value adjustment board.
No, I'm on.
Yeah, but, but those, you don't have to belong to those. Those are like the fair board.
One I do, the superintendent.
Juvenile justice, right?
Replacement for the state advisory group. I'm on the state advisory group for juvenile justice.
Right. Okay, so that's two.
There's one from every county?
Circuit.
So it's the 12th circuit?
No, that's the circuit board. I'm on the circuit board also. There's a local board, which has been collapsed, we're from right here. And then there's the circuit board, which is our circuit, I sit on that.
But then again, if it's a circuit board, how do you get to be the one that sits on that when, and then it could be other districts that might want to be on it, too? I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Well, there are.
I mean, but it's not something that we require, that's something that's outside.
Manatee is on there, DeSoto's there, I mean.
Those are the three.
But it's mandated by statute, that's, that's the important thing. It's a committee mandated by statute.
Okay.
It is.
But we have other committees, I, I can't remember what they all are, but several of them were countywide.
Well, some were not on anymore.
And some were not on now that we should be on.
That the, that the, some people in the community are.
Upset with us for not being on. So we need to, we need to look at that, we need to review that, Kathy, probably, in the next little while.
Well, it was like whether a board member or a representative from the school district should be there. And, you know, and that, that's, I think, where we were having the trouble, because it doesn't have to be a school board member, but a representative of the school board or school district.
Yes.
Needed to be there.
We had Cheryl Reynolds that helped us with some things for the county that, that we didn't feel that we had the time to. Remember when you?
Or, or that we didn't feel it was in our elected official position to do that. I think that was the, the grants committee.
The county planning commission has a position for a school board representative.
Right.
Kathy Evas sits in there as our representative.
And then there was that, that other one where it's the grants, and I'm like, I don't want to be an elected official telling another elected official how they should spend their money, unless, of course, it's.
And then, and then we have the health.
Health and human services.
Committee, the health and human services committee, we had the, the health committee.
I think this came up when Pine View had a committee. Pine View had a committee on whether or not they were going to expand, and they were saying, wait a minute, you know, by having a school board member sitting on that committee, that that kind of flavored, and then I think there was a committee for employee health and some of those other things, and they were saying.
I've been on employee health, and I'm on the food service board that only meets twice a year, and, and I understand in here, it says, school board will not participate in any school district committees. Well, we have before, that's never been our policy.
Yes, it has been.
It has been our policy?
Yes.
Yeah, because they were saying they didn't want us sitting there at the table when, when Pine View was making up their, and it was Pine View determining what their limit was or whether they should expand or not. I mean, I don't know why it was good or bad for a school board member to be there.
Well, because a school board member can influence people, because we don't.
Well, any, anybody on that committee can influence people, so could the principal.
We don't see our position as power, but the community people see it as power. So therefore, the very fact of how, what you say you should do, or you're in favor of, you're projecting your power onto them, that's what they should do.
Well, so.
I understand it.
So we've got a line that says, we will not participate, so do we or don't we?
So look at this paragraph and see if there are any changes to it. I think it looks fine like it is.
So we, we say it's fine even though we, we have people that sit on committees that we're not supposed to sit on?
School board members will not participate in any school district committee, says the right there.
That's like the calendar committee?
Yeah.
Carol Todd always wanted to be on that.
And the school health committee?
Wow, I read that.
I'm not on that committee, I'm not in, I'm not on that committee anymore.
No, can't.
You want to be, you may attend but not participate? You're welcome at any of those, most of them are publicly noticed, but.
Oh, yeah, shall not participate, yeah, shall not.
But not participate.
That means you can't say anything. Do you think?
That would be nearly impossible for you or me.
Well, instead of participate, maybe we should say, shall not be a member, because maybe they ask, I don't know.
Let's just let, let's leave it as it is, please.
Okay.
I think it's fine. Okay, equipment. Is everybody using their district cellphone?
No.
Raise your hand if you're not.
You using?
No, I'm not.
I have one.
I haven't, I haven't gotten one out of the box yet, but I do have it.
I dropped mine, and I need a new one. Yeah, Joe, you said you were going to get me that.
What did you, you already?
I want to ask a question about required.
I didn't get a cover for it, get a cover for it.
I want to know who's required it.
Yeah, why is it required?
Who's required it? Is this required by the state?
No.
No.
Is this required by us?
I, you recently discussed and approved for advertisement a new policy that we discussed separately about, that included, among other things, text messaging. And I don't recall off the top of my head if that required all the board members to use a district cellphone.
Because if I'm.
I have mine, do you do all my texting for the school related stuff? That's what I use mine for. So it's still in the box in my drawer, so.
So you haven't gotten yours out either? It's an Android, and I'm, you know, we.
I got it out, charged it up. We did the phones, so when, if someone dials that number, it rings on my personal cellphone. You set it off.
Oh, okay.
I, all I do with my phone is I give it to Joe and say.
That's a great idea, Eric. I can just forward it.
Take what you want.
You forward the phone, you forward the phone so that it.
Rings there.
So it's, so it's making its contact and collecting data, but.
If you use a district phone, we do not have to take possession of the phone to comply with public records requests.
All right.
They are automatically archived. If you're using a phone other than a district device, then we must take possession of the device because the text message is stored in that device's memory.
Which I never had a problem with, because I, so that's why I don't want to carry another phone around. I just, honest, I just give the phone to Joe and say, take what you need. And having a district cellphone does not mean you're going to use it.
Definitely, I'm, I'm not.
So it's required, but if we don't use it, what's the sense of having it required?
I don't believe anyone other than the board itself can require the board to use district cell phones. So if you, you know, the superintendent can't, I can't, no, nobody can. You could impose that policy on yourself, but that's up to you.
Do you want to impose it? I don't.
Well, Shirley's already broken hers, so.
Well, oh, it, just, just, just the, the glass on one side, I, you know, I just get glass shards in my thumb whenever I use it, but.
I want to ask how that happened, because I'm sure you dropped it on the pavement, right?
Yes.
It's not that hard. I, I set up with my email, I forward the phone number, so that, I do all my, if I do any texts, it's.
And you just have your phone, you just have all, yeah.
Yeah, I forwarded my texts, too, but it didn't seem to be enough.
Eric, I'm going to.
The obvious reason is so that we can make sure that we are capturing.
Mindful of any.
Whether they're emails or texts or what have you. If you can set them up.
Exactly.
As you've, you've surpassed me in technological ability already.
So if somebody calls that phone number, it's going to be logged in, and Joe's going to have that logged. Even though I'm talking to them on my phone, I set it up so that if somebody calls that number, now there's going to be a log of everybody who calls that number. I set it up to email, but I also get my emails here, and now there's a log of any emails. I just basically mirrored it so that anybody who uses that device, or if I ever use that device, the school board has a record of it. But that doesn't tether me to just two phones, I can still, you know, use my one phone.
What?
All right.
I can still, I can still just walk around with one phone in my pocket.
Still going to leave it.
Optional?
Optional is a great word. Could you go with optional?
Yeah, leave it as optional, and then if you, you know, have a problem with it, it's your problem.
No, I will probably.
It's not my problem, it's your problem.
One thing, I, I don't know where to put this, but one other thought that I had.
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be, because I really think it's disrespectful to other board members and to our audience for us to sit up here during meetings and use our texts.
My husband is texting, calling me, calling, I don't know why he's calling me. He, he knows I'm in a meeting.
Well, Mike does sometimes, too, and I just don't think it's right.
Mm-hmm.
And that's how we got in trouble the last time. I think we should not be using our phones while we're at, at the board table.
I understand that's, I'm the guy who, who did it, so, I'm the guy who messed up, but so, so I learned. But I'm still a small business owner, and I still have three small children, and so I have people emailing me for work, and just the reality of the situation.
But when you're here, you're supposed to be working here.
But I can multitask.
So can I, but.
Well, you shouldn't be texting people.
I agree, I'm not texting people, I'm not texting people.
That's nothing, I understand you're needing to work on, but.
In an emergency, we can always give people Kathy's phone number, and they can call Kathy for, if it's an emergency.
She wasn't monitoring her, you get.
The reality of the world today, it's, it's kind of hard to unplug for eight hours.
That's what kids tell me, and I disagree with them.
I disagree.
I, I understand you.
People are texting, and there's audiences, people out.
I don't mean to be rude, but you and I are in a different generation, I mean, we, I mean, I, I just.
I'm always on my phone.
Okay.
Always, except when I'm at the board table.
I.
I am never on my phone.
Okay.
Because I don't believe it. I don't believe, this is the business of the board, and I should be focused on the business of the board, not the business of whatever other thing.
So if you got a text from your, your grandson.
I wouldn't know.
About being picking, picked up at 1:00, and, and the husband who's supposed to be picking him up was, was calling to.
I wouldn't know.
Okay.
Because it's in my.
I don't know what they're doing.
Well, you know, we had a, we had an incident in Manatee County where we had a board member that is no longer there now, but she was, I guess, had an issue litigation, lots of legal expenses over her texting someone in the audience.
Oh.
Didn't go over very well. This was just a few years ago.
No, I don't want to see, I just don't.
Okay, individual members budget allocation.
You didn't finish this answer.
What?
We didn't come to a conclusion, I didn't hear.
Do we have?
No, we don't want to do it, yes.
Oh, I don't think we should be texting in any way, I mean, if there was an emergency.
I, I agree, we should not be texting board business, but I'm a, I have people in my office emailing me stuff, asking me for stuff, and I, I'm just sorry if you, you know, I, I have to deal with that. When I became a board member, everybody knew I was a small business owner. So if, if the electorate doesn't like that, then when I stand for reelection, they can vote me out. It's as simple as that.
So where do you stand, Shirley?
Well, I know we would sit up at the board table, and, and there would be, because Carol Todd was allowed, and she'd click, 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 click. I never knew what she was up to, except that sometimes she was out there getting background information on what it was we were talking about, and she'd show up with it. So she would use her device and do things related to what we were doing on the board, not that she, because I, we definitely should not be texting about board activity with anyone in the audience, either here or out there.
I, I, I learned my lesson, I agree.
No, well, you know.
White flag, white flag. I don't dispute that.
I just don't think we should be texting at all. We should be focused on what the business of the board is, because that's your job, what you're doing.
Well, I think, you know, some of us have little ones and other issues, but I think we should keep it at a minimum, and if you need to do something, then step out of the room and go handle it, you know, and come back.
I watch us, and I see how much texting goes on, and email reading and everything while we're up there at that dais, and when we're down here talking.
Well, I remember being up on that dais and actually a person who was the chair at the time, and this was maybe eight years ago or so, actually playing a, a video game while people were talking.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that's, 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 I would think is, is out of long.
She's no longer. Talking about now, Shirley.
But, but to. I sort of agree with Eric on this. You know, I, I got a, a, a text, well, it was a call, but I didn't answer it, saying, I'm in a meeting, can't talk, but then I'm getting a text from my granddaughter, too, who he's supposed to be picking up, so I'm like, what's going on here? Didn't know what the problem was. Apparently, it's no big problem at all. So I, I don't have to run and go, but when my granddaughter was supposed to be picked up at 1:00, and my husband's calling me, and they're both count, I want to know what the issue is. I would be sitting here, and I would not be giving the rest of the attention to the board. I mean, I would rather just be, push the couple buttons and take care of it rather than to get up and leave.
But she has a mother, too.
Well, I, I know she has a mother, but I, you know what.
I just, I just don't agree with it, it's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
It's two to two.
All right.
Well, if we're not voting.
No.
Nope.
Why, it's two to two?
But, but it, it is that, we were talking about whether or not the district phone should be required, and, you know, I think when you have a district phone, can they go back and get records of the, the phone calls made?
They called you?
I mean, I know on my, on my bill, my Verizon bill, I could not go back and get a list of the phone calls made or the text messages that went on, my personal phone.
I don't know how the district phone bill looks, but however it looks, it is a public record.
And the person who pays the bill is the one who can tell the provider what it wants. I mean, so if...
I assume that is correct.
And, and that might have had something to do with it, I don't know. But my, my personal phone changed providers in the middle, and that caused some problem on getting some stuff, even though I emailed the text messages into the district, there were still questions on it, and, so I'm, I'm going to keep my district, even though very few people use it.
Well, let's...
We've changed it to optional.
Let's just leave it at optional and go on. We don't need to even add that one in there.
Do we need optional or required one? Can we just leave it?
We'll just leave it at optional, or leave it at nothing.
Yeah, just leave it district cellphone.
Then individual member budget allocation. Item number one, under professional association dues. That I am assuming is not statewide FSBA or other association dues, but that would be local association or some...
Or I would say other professional association dues.
Yes. Any others?
Yes, wait a minute.
So, point of clarification, so if I, for the sake of argument, don't belong to an association...
Yes.
And whatever it costs, X dollars, will I be able to take that X dollars and spend it somewhere else?
No.
Or, or if I belong to an association that's less than X, that's half of X, will I be able to take that difference and spend it somewhere else?
No.
That didn't seem fair. And I'm telling you this, I, I'm, you're not, I've never put a reimbursement in, nor do I, I plan on ever doing that, but, but I'm thinking about other people, which doesn't seem fair to the other people who, who decide that, you know, "I'm going to go to an association that's half, and I'm going to spend my other money going to community events, you know, I want to go to more community events than, than the other people, and I'm going to go to an association that pays less than half." They should have that leeway, it just seems fair. As long as, as long as the total dollars is the same, I don't see what the issue is. If not, then you're going to have certain board members that get allocated more money than other board members, and, and that's not fair.
The reason, the reason we want the participation in activities and have that line item, because when you're a member of the Florida School Boards Association or the consortium, you go there and you learn things about your position, how to be a board member, and you learn what other things are, are going on in the state, and you talk to other board members. That is professional development, if you look at it. So professional, I would look at this as, you know, what's under 250 is professional development. And, and to then say, "Well, if I don't use it for professional development, I can go have more lunches, you know, with, with the chamber, or with, you know, Tiger Bay, or whatever." I, I don't see that as apples to apples. I think that we need to have the professional development, because it's important for us to, I think, encourage, like it says, encourage to participate in activities and programs. It's professional development, and I don't think it's equal that you should turn around...
But once if I wanted to join the Florida Association of School Board Consortiums, whatever, and their, their dues are $1,000, and I can go to the Florida Coalition of School Board Consortiums, and I can get my PD, get my training, blah, 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 but it's only $1,000, and I want to use the other, the difference between that and X, and I want to use it on, on other professional development that's being taught by the National School Board Association. It seems like since there's a difference between the two, I should be able to take that delta and spend it on my own professional development, which I think is right for me. So, for example, I could, I could envision me saying, "You know what, I want to be, I know Mitzi's in the finance, government-chartered financial accountants." So let's say I wanted to be a member of that association, and it was cheaper, and I wanted to get PD and budgeting and finance, and, because that was something that, you know, appeals to me. But, so shouldn't I be able to, if their difference, if their cost is different, shouldn't I be able to use the leftover cost to do professional development on, on school budgeting and school financing and school budget, if that's an area, area that I want to, you know, look, delve into? Shouldn't I have that right?
But that's what we all have a right under Florida School Board Association.
But, but once if I...
But it was very items that you talked about.
But once if I want to do it through the, through the Florida, I forgot the one that she belongs to.
Consortium.
No, the one Mitzi belongs to. Finance Office Association.
Association of America, there's a national that she belongs to in a state.
So let's say I wanted to belong to that, to, to learn about budgeting and, and finance, and, because I think that that'd make me a better board member by understanding the budgeting and finance process. Shouldn't I have that right?
I would say you're not a finance officer. You know, and you even talk about, you know, the, the right to be a member of a consortium that doesn't necessarily advocate for the same things that the FSBA does, and in fact, sometimes advocates against what FSBA is doing. I mean, I, sometimes I have a problem even paying for that, if it's not in line with what we are doing for public schools. And I believe that, and there, there is a philosophical difference here, I believe that according to the Constitution, we represent the public schools.
I wasn't, I...
I know you don't. I'm not saying you don't, but I'm saying, but I'm saying, you're, you're talking about...
The finance members.
Finance, but I would think even the financing, you're supposed to be, you're, you're supposed to be sitting in a finance position, not a school board position. The, the place where you go to get your learning, I mean, just like, you, you can go to, you know, be a member of your CPAs or whatever you do.
FIA CPA.
But, you know, you do that as, as, you know, Florida CPAs, you don't do that as a board member. The, the way you get the, the training for the board member is through the Florida School Boards Association, through the Florida, or the National School Boards Association. These are the associations that are set up for public school boards, and the training is there.
Can I take us back to, Shirley, go back to our policy? Our policy says to cover expenses to support the participation of individual school board members in activities and programs conducted by the state and other organizations. So it's in our, it's in our policy.
Relative to being a school board member.
Right.
But he's saying that if, if he wants to, if, if, if he's in a, not FSBA, and it's cheaper to be a member of this other, that he ought to be able to take that money and go somewhere else.
So, he can. It says.
I, I...
And programs conducted by the state and other organizations. That's what our policy says. It doesn't say FSBA, FCBB, whatever it is, or the consortium, it doesn't say any of that, it just says, "You can do it."
But Florida School Board Association's been doing this for 80 years, and they do have a certified board members program, which I think is quite good. I think you would have enjoyed some of the courses that you...
I, I would enjoy going to the finance one, I would love to go to that one, that just is in February.
But at any rate, you know, this is, this is what this is about, so I, I don't think that the, whether it's fair or not, or whether it's equitable, or you get the same amount of money, is of import.
But I just want to make sure it is stated that I'm not asking for money to go to the finance chartered, and I'm not asking for money for that. I was just simply using it as an example.
As an example.
We know.
Okay.
Okay.
So when we have other professional association dues, the travel expenses related to their individual professional development, I think that, too, is included in 250, because it says to cover expenses to support the participation of additional, of individual board members in activities and programs, and I think the travel-related expenses to the professional development that's included in the FSBA also should be included in 250, and it shouldn't be part of the procedures.
250 is your policy, and your policy has to be broad to cover everything, and that's why it reads as it does, and it doesn't have anything specific in here. You never want to make a policy that's very specific.
I'm talking about the procedure right now that says that under...
It said 250, 250 is policy.
I said, if you listen, that the travel expenses related to their individual professional development should not be included in the individual's members' budget allocation. It shouldn't be included in the procedures, because I believe that the expenses related to individual professional development is included in that discussion on, that's in the policy of 250, that's that separate line item.
That's where I wrote duplicate.
So I think that should be crossed off, I think that should be crossed off of here.
So it should be other association dues, community events, and mileage reimbursement?
Where in the world are you guys?
Or you can even say, or we can say other travel expenses, if you want to say other travel for professional development.
So how, how much is the budget that, when we're talking about 250, since we're moving on stuff, how much money are we talking about?
Well, I don't know why this is a big issue either, but somebody says it's a big issue.
I'm just asking how much, you're talking about, then now we're all going to have a budget item for professional association and travel for PD committees of the association. I'm just curious, how much money, is it, is it going to be the same amount for each person?
We're not going to have now, we're going to have continue.
Continue, so in the future, what is, what is, how much money?
As I explained, I think, the last time we discussed this, normally, when a new board member gets elected, there are new board member training, new board members will spend more time in the first term, maybe the first year, first two years, or whatever, for professional development. There, there's, you can become a certified board member. I believe, just like this year, Dr. Bowden has spent, I wouldn't say, an inmate, not in, I don't mean, but, but he has spent more time and more expenses going to the Superintendent's Association meetings this year than he will in the, in the subsequent...
Todd, I was not trying to go down that road.
So, so a new board member normally would spend more money upfront going to these, and so that's where it's not, I mean, to say that we should all have the same amount, it doesn't make any sense, because the new board member would need more training than a board member that gets reelected, or reelected.
And so how, how much do the people get reelected and reelected? How much money is going to be allocated?
It's 250 a month, right?
No, no, no.
You're talking about the one under...
About how much, he's talking about how much money would, this, I don't know what it is, but it's...
It's never been, it's never been brought up as an issue, and it's in the budget line every year.
What we would do is, we would go look at past expenditures and make an allocation that lines up with past expenditures, and then if it exceeds it, we have the ability to move additional funds into it. So if we started at 15,000, and we got to the end of the year and needed to pay dues, we would do a budget transfer into it out of the allocation of dues and fees that probably weren't used elsewhere in the district.
So, so if the number is 15,000, does that mean 3,000 each? Does that mean 15?
The way I would implement the policy and procedures as it's written now, there would be a cost strip that was dues and fees, and that would cover all five of you. Then there would be individual allocations for each of the five of you. So, as an example, it would be $15,000 for school board dues and fees, there wouldn't be a name on it, just school board dues and fees. And then there would be $5,000, Eric Robinson, $5,000, Bridget Ziegler, and go right down through the five of you.
Because the reason why I'm asking is because I don't take any of that money, because I'm trying to save this district money. I would hate for me not to take that money, and then that money gets, still gets spent.
The 5,000 and Eric Robinson dues and fees, if you didn't use it at the end of the year, it would revert back to the reserve, and you would start the next year with 5,000.
That's what I would, would want. I would, it would, it would defeat the entire purpose.
I would not divide it up amongst the other four.
Okay, because that would defeat the entire purpose of me doing what I'm doing.
I also, though, want to make sure, though, that when you're making that board, if we have new board members, that, of course, we won't know until after the budget is made, if we have new board members, but there may be new board members that might want to go and get this training or getting the certification.
I will give up my 5,000 for that new board member, if there's such a need.
There'll be an allocation in there that the new board member will be able to go to. We've never, we've never gone over it. I mean, 20 years I've been doing this, we've never gone over it, so I, this is mute.
Yeah, and, and I think it was whether it was a, a flat amount per month, or if it was the total amount. I mean, because sometimes dues, dues have to get paid at a certain time of the year. I mean, it's like...
Mitzi knows exactly how much money we're allocated, and when to approve something, and when not to approve it. And I've had Mitzi tell me one time, "No, that can't be approved," and I'm fine, okay. So I, I don't have a big worry about this. I trust staff. Staff will do what's right.
And, you know, when does the board chair, is the board chair the one responsible for approving it or not? I mean, I know that kind of went through me, but it was like...
No.
I'm not telling another person whether or not they can.
You have to approve it, but you, you have no, in my opinion, as share.
We went, we went three months this, this year with one of your approvals, because it was $13 over something not being approved.
And it shouldn't have been stopped there. It should have went to, it should have been approved, it would have went to Mitzi, and Mitzi would have said, "You're over." And that's what would have happened. I've never in my life had something not approved, and waited three months to have something approved.
What was it?
It was, it was at a community event that I went to. So what I did...
$13?
$13. So what I did was go back, revise my thing, took the $13 off, and resubmitted it, so it finally got paid.
And then the $13 you could put in the next month?
No, I didn't. It's, it's silly.
But I want to make sure we're all reading the policy correctly, because your procedures are amongst yourselves, but the policy, I'm responsible for enforcing.
Correct.
And as you read Policy 2.50, it says, "The superintendent shall include an amount in each proposed annual budget to cover expenses." It doesn't say just the dues.
Right.
And so you take FSBA as an example. We will pay the dues for FSBA out of this account, that is, not to any specific board member, but then if you chose to participate in their summer conference, your participation in the summer conference, your mileage, your hotel, your food, would also come out of the umbrella account, not the individuals, because this said expenses to support participation. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, that if you're going to an FSBA legislative committee, I'm not going to take that out of your individual travel account. I'm taking it out of the umbrella, because it says expenses related to. It doesn't say dues for belonging to. It says expenses related to.
You know, and, and I think you can look at that, like, if, if somebody does go to a national conference of school board, NSBA, National School Boards Association, they go to a conference when there's, you know, legislation going through in Tallahassee, but not Tallahassee, Washington. I mean, if they go and they learn, I mean, I would hope they would bring that information back, but they go to represent us. I mean, we don't pay them extra money for the extra hours they're putting in. I mean, so it's kind of, you know, we, we pay their travel to go there, but we're not giving them any extra money for their time they're spending.
I've been invited to go there several years now, and I haven't gone because of the expense.
Denver, Chicago, I mean, I can't say it, Las Vegas, I've never gone, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't charge it to the district.
I'll go to the Vegas one.
What?
Do you like, do you like Vegas? Okay.
So, so on that, we're going to change that to other professional associations and other travel expenses? So that we, we clarify that it's other than what's on 250, the state associations?
If we go to the next page, though, we have the very same thing. Association dues, professional development, and community events is added in there.
It just says you have to bring the receipts in.
And then the last, on the next page, are we ready to go to the next page?
Yeah, I am.
I mean, we, we still have to bring receipts and invoices.
Yeah.
We know that.
I mean, I don't necessarily say it's duplicative, but...
The one under it is association dues, professional development, community events. That, to me, is duplicate.
So you want to take association dues, well, no, we'll let, we'll just put in front of that, other, other association dues, just like we did before, so we'll have other, so we know it's not...
Not quite sure I understand what you mean. Just put other in, and, so that's where I think, that's where I was thinking was duplicative.
Well, it, it goes back to...
I mean, if we use other, just like we did before, it's other professional association dues and other travel expenses.
Okay.
Other than the FSBA or the other state or federal associations, school board associations. So these are, it'd be, so if we put other there, we would want to put other here, to, to make that separate from the ones that are covered under the Policy 2.50, that the superintendent does the budget line item for.
This just says you have to have receipts and invoices and sign that public purpose statement. It doesn't say anything else, it should be...
Can I ask a point of clarification?
On the individual board members.
Just to, I, I know I lost my fairness argument, but to somewhat go down that road just a little bit, just to tip my toe in it. The, the organization that, that, I mean, because Shirley mentioned, made a comment earlier, the organization that Budget belongs to, that's covered under 2.5 also?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that.
Oh, yes, very definitely.
Yes.
Does anybody understand what I'm saying?
I don't know where, what you're trying to do.
Association dues and professional development should be under the budget allocation or someplace over here for individual board members.
On that next page, on that following page where we, where we're discussing these items here?
It's still, it's still under the, the heading of the individual members' budget allocation, and then it says, and then, see, then it takes, it takes out the travel, and then, then it gives you amount reimbursement, and then it says, this all does go further ahead.
All right, just take out all the stuff.
Yeah, you have to take out the stricken language.
So how much is the individual budget allocation? You said that's the 5,000?
We set that.
Oh, no.
Nothing in this procedure that sets that. It will be part of the budget, at which I'll make a proposal that you can then vote up, vote down, or amend.
So just for bananas and giggles, if it's $5,000, could I write a check out to Emmy Booker for $5,000, then get reimbursed for $5,000?
No, you may not.
Okay.
Even if that's for education?
You may use your own checking account to write that check.
I have.
I know.
Just trying to leverage. Can't put a whatup for trial.
It's not a slush fund if they travel.
The Friday, and then the gender review, meeting agenda section, are you down there?
Yes.
We're down to the school board meeting agenda.
Kathy, does this work for you? That, um, school board meeting agenda, that whole thing, the release of the agenda and all of that stuff? Yeah.
Yes, but this part of the procedure actually conflicts itself. What it says is, "We're going to release it to you for your preview on the Friday." Then by, first it says by Tuesday you need to, an email should be sent to the administration on that, or prior to publication. Publication is Tuesday, but then it says no changes are allowed after Friday. So is it Tuesday or is it Friday? Okay, so what
There's two Fridays involved.
What's important about the Tuesday deadline? No, Friday you get it.
Friday we get it. The following Tuesday it's published. And then that Friday, we can make changes up until that Friday.
If a school board member desires to move an item to new business or pull an item for comment, an email should be sent to the administrative assistant prior to publication.
Okay.
That's Tuesday.
That would be prior to the Tuesday.
That's Tuesday.
I always went with the, um, the assumption that there'd be no changes unless it was some real big emergency after Tuesday. And that's the way I
Even if you pull for comment, you have to pull
Well, pull for comment is not a big, big fat change, but I thought that if, I thought it needed to be completed on Tuesday.
But sometimes we don't have all the material on Tuesday. Sometimes we don't have all the backup material.
Well, that's true, but I still thought that we needed to have it published and complete at the same time and that we were really
Your, your policies and, and says that the agenda needs to be out a week in advance.
That's right.
After that time, the agenda can be changed, but it needs to go through, the board can change it for good cause, or the board could, I'm sorry, the chair could change it for good cause, or the board can vote certainly to move something from the agenda at the board table.
Right.
But I think what you're, what the practice has been is that if somebody wants to move something from consent, an individual wants to move something from consent to new business, that has been permitted just for one board member to do that, um, so that the whole consent agenda wouldn't be voted down necessarily if that was the purpose. And I don't know what the timeframe of that was. The second Friday?
The second Friday. That's what it was.
But not every time should that happen. You know, that should be the exception and not the rule. Every time, we're not looking to let that happen every Friday. So I always tried and have always tried to say Tuesday is it and try to have your changes made by that Tuesday.
And is there not a distinction to be made between moving an item to new business and pulling for comment? Pulling for comment does not alter the agenda
Right. That's just
That's just saying
Just talking.
Heads up, I want to talk about it.
That's right.
So there's a distinction between those two.
Right. That's not changing the agenda at all.
And that's what I thought could be
That's just saying I'd like to speak.
That second Friday. That's what I thought, but I thought real changes, saying, "Oh, no, we were moving this to new business" and that sort of thing had to be done the Tuesday ahead of
That would be preferable because then that's how it would be published. But, I mean, you could literally do it at the board meeting.
Yeah.
You could move something from consent to new business.
I think we've done that.
And the, and the, the public, as long as it's on the agenda to start with, it's not like you're even adding something. It's just where you're voting on it
Right.
The agenda.
Eric?
Yeah. I, I, I agree. I, I don't like having to have a Tuesday deadline to pull something to, to new agenda. There's a lot of times we have holidays on the Monday. Um, I know, we can't get to talk to anybody. Uh, they have, we've just had a time where we had spring break and then Tuesday was the time. So, I mean, and plus, there, there are things where, you know, you're still thinking about it, um, and then something may come up. Today, we had people present something that's going to be on the consent agenda later today. I may have watched, I'm not going to, but I'm just using as an example. I may have wanted to move that to new, new business because after hearing them, I, I may not like it and, you know, 12% and blah, 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 blah. And if another board member wanted, I'm not going to. But if another board member wanted to do that, I wouldn't have, I would understand, I would respect that board member who wanted to pull that agenda at the board meeting because I don't want to force them to vote for something that they didn't want to vote for. So I think you should have the ability to pull something. But I agree with Jane. It should be the exception. You shouldn't be abusing that fact. If somebody's doing that on a fairly regular basis, which I don't think anybody has, um, then, then that's a whole nother ball of wax. But if there's a rare, rare thing comes up and somebody, you know, wants to pull something, I think we should give that board member that, you know, the preference and privilege and pull for
Well, pulled for comment is one thing. Pull for new business is another.
I was talking about pulling for new business.
Yeah.
Well, and, and maybe we ought to just put those into two sentences. I mean, it's all pulled together as if it's the same.
But I don't ever want to force somebody to vote for something they didn't want to.
So what date do you want to use? The Tuesday or the Friday?
Any issue with us altering the agenda after it's released on Tuesday by Friday moving items?
I, I don't, I think we would amend the agenda, but I don't think that's a problem in the sense that you're not adding anything new. You're simply reordering so that
Right.
The public knows that is something that will be voted upon. And, and again, you could do it at the board table. Somebody could, somebody could move to, you know, they may not win, but you could move to move item number eight to new business, for example.
What, what about, because I, I think there's three actions that could be taken. One of them is pull for comment and, and that
That's an easy
That's an easy thing. The other one is moving something from the consent agenda to new business. And I think if you're going to be wanting to vote against something, you know, it, we should allow that to happen so that we don't have to make a stink at the table. The other thing is, which we, we don't really discuss, is that adding a new item to the agenda that wasn't there before.
That's a whole nother issue.
Yeah.
Well, well, I think we need, well, it, it has been tried. I think we need, we need to clarify that
And she's done it.
Yeah.
She had it though.
Adding, adding a new item shouldn't be done, uh, the Friday before the board meeting on Tuesday.
Well, it shouldn't, but then we had in the workshop, it was just at our last meeting. We had at the workshop and then we added something to waive the rules, um, to allow that to happen. So we do, um, and I, I think we should maybe say something that we don't add, that we normally do not add items to the agenda
Okay, so we need to All right. So we don't have the ability to add items to the agenda.
No, that's
So So I have the ability to add items to the agenda. If you want to add items to an agenda, it would have taken place at the previous meeting to begin with because it would have come in the form of a motion and a directive to the superintendent. So are you talking about staff adding items to agenda after Tuesday? Or are you talking about board members?
She's talking about taking a vote on something that wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah.
Well, that wouldn't be a change to the agenda. That would be motions and
Right.
Activities made at the dais, but that would not be a change to the agenda.
Okay.
Right. And that's what happened last time.
Yep.
And
And the board has to vote on it.
The board has to vote on doing that and you have to give the public the opportunity to comment. And it certainly should be the exception, not the rule, because you could be perceived as trying to do an end run around appropriate notice.
Right. But, but we have done it, but it, but it should be used sparingly.
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 When there's true time pressure.
I've never done it until recently.
Right. But you, you have done it. Shirley's done it and I've done it.
Oh, I've not done it ever.
I, I think you have.
No, I haven't.
You did two meetings ago.
I brought something that wasn't, I pulled something for comment.
No, you, you, you read, you read from something. You, you did an agenda item.
No, I did under public comment.
No, you took a vote. No, you, you did a
Find out what it was and tell me.
Was it security?
Right.
Was it a security issue? You, you had a, you had a motion. You read.
In, in 20 years, something might have come up
You did.
You tried to fix.
It was like a month or two ago.
But, but they're, they're, they're small items.
Something that's, that you wanted.
Yeah.
A workshop, it may be
Yeah.
You followed
There may have been something that came up at a workshop that we wanted to make official at a board meeting by
But you made the motion.
Yes, because I got it.
But you made the motion. So you have done it.
Yeah, but not for my own self.
Nobody makes motions for, nobody makes anything for our own self.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
So we have, we have those items that we Yeah, we've, we've got seven minutes left. Okay, let's move on. Can we move on to the next page?
Sure.
Is there anything else on that
I heard of this one.
At that meeting agenda? How about on the next page? Board members top the page wishing to address a certain topic raised during hearings. Citizens may do so at the completion of all speakers. That's new. The chair can ask or direct the superintendent to have appropriate staff follow up with the citizen when appropriate. That's, we've done before.
I'm fine with that.
With speaking to the citizens as well?
No, I, I don't know how I feel on that.
I think we have to be careful and cautious with that. I sometimes think that it's a good thing because it makes people think we're, we're paying attention to them and sometimes we need to address issues.
You know, sometimes maybe just even think. I mean, I, because sometimes I know they get upset when it looks like nobody listened or nobody paid attention. I like that addition.
Oh, but the only problem with this addition is we had a guy come and tell us about his dying daughter. His mother was a, the wife was a teacher at Lorna Comus. And I think it would have been vastly inappropriate for us to say, "Okay, next." We had to address that guy's concern. At the moment that guy came up and spoke, I mean, to do anything looks like a monster.
I think the superintendent should be the one that responds.
Yeah, but we all, all five of us talked at that point when that, when that father